The October 9th, 2012 meeting of the Valley View School Board is reconvened. Mr. Vinegas, can you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir, will do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Quigley is absent today as long with Member Hanson. I do not know if I will be able to beat my prior record without President Quigley being here 21 minutes, but I will do my best. Affirmations. Who would like to read the board affirmation statements? Member Curran, would you be so kind?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our mission is to ensure all students, that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through a rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Agenda revisions, Dr. Mitchum.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to ask the board to approve the agenda as presented.
May I have a motion in seconds?
So moved.
Will Secretary please call the roll?
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Consent agenda items.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to ask the board to approve consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-4, board meeting minutes, executive session meeting minutes, ratify the board secretary's designation of Shelley Casey as the person to receive election nominating petitions as of September 25th, 2012, and gifts for Independence in Oakview Elementary School as well as Bolingbrook High School.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Assistant Superintendent Grzafi, Treasurers report.
Yes, Treasurers Action Report 5 dot 1, the monthly report for September 2012 includes the financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, and the interim obligation payments for September totaling $4,103,636.14 for your consideration in action.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Treasurers Action Report 5 dot 2 is the schedule of bills for October 2012 for Funds 1, 2, 4, 6, 8, and 11 as outlined in the exhibit. Bills payable totaling $3,665,151.42 for your consideration in action.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will Secretary call the roll, please?
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
The next four information reports are the summary of investments, property taxes received, the state funding update, and the school trust activity accounts. For your information, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them at this time.
Could you give us just a little brief about the state funding update? I'm sure somebody would like to give a little detail about that.
The last time we talked about state funding was at the budget presentation at our last meeting. At that time, I believe I shared with the board that we were current for at least six or seven days where the state had paid us what it had owed us, at least through the end of September. And sure enough, as September 30th rolls around, we become in arrears with the state to the tune of $4.4 million in the areas that should be all too familiar to us, in the areas of special education, transportation, the school lunch program, as well as driver's ed, bilingual, and early childhood. And so, it does not look like we are going to be seeing this catch-up, if you will, any time in this fiscal year. I did see a news article over the weekend that the state backlog was beginning to shrink, but again, it still stands at a very large sum of money, and so I don't believe, as I said here today, that come June 30, when we close our books, we'll be caught up with the state in about this amount of money. I think we were at $4.3 million for the last fiscal year.
Thank you.
Student and staff recognition, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, first to the podium will be the Principal of Independence Elementary School, Ms. Kim O'Keahy.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Mitchum, senior leadership, and the Valley View community. We are here tonight to recognize the pillar of Valley View from Independence School. Heather Hernandez is being honored tonight as a pillar of Valley View for the contribution she has made during her 15-year career at Independence. A graduate of Romeoville High School, Ms. Hernandez taught second and third grades at Independence before becoming our LMC director five years ago. Heather also supports the school by serving as the technology coach and the school's webmaster. Ms. Hernandez is a leader within the Independence School staff. She is well-respected, and her opinions are valued by both teachers and administrators. Heather's contributions extend to all facets of the school through her service on committees and willingness to share her own time to assist others. Just one example of this is our peer leader program, as she has volunteered to organize and train 5th grade peer leaders at Independence for the past 10 years. Heather has also been instrumental in obtaining almost $7,000 in grants for the Independence Library from the Valley View Educational Enrichment Foundation and other outside sources, one of those being the gift that you approved tonight for $500 worth of books from Target. It is Heather's unselfish commitment to the Independence School community that makes her our Valley View pillar.
Next from Avedo Martinez Middle School, Principal Sarah DiDonato.
Good evening, board members, senior leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and members of the Valley View community. It is my privilege and honor to present Mrs. Stacy Morelos as a pillar of Valley View. Mrs. Morelos has been a Martinez Middle School Viking for the past 10 years, beginning as a one-on-one aide and transitioning into a special education teacher role after earning her master's in special education. In her current role as a supported education and language arts co-teacher, Mrs. Morelos works tirelessly to provide accommodations for her students with special needs. She works late into the evening calling families and working together with them to support their child's academic progress. Mrs. Morelos also recently assisted the administration by working with another colleague to present to the AVM faculty a lesson about accommodations for students with special needs. In addition to her role as a teacher, she co-facilitates the ecology club. This club is responsible for planting prairie gardens in front of Martinez Middle School and installing gravel pathways to walk around them. Mrs. Morelos is working together with the Village of Romeoville to sponsor a Greening Up America Community event on Saturday, November 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Avedo Martinez Middle School. And we are going to shamelessly promote this event right now by asking you to bring all of your paper products, cell phones, printer cartridges, books, aluminum cans, crans, pop-tops, eyeglasses, and hearing aids to AVM on November 3rd. It is a privilege and honor to work with Mrs. Morelos, and her positivity and belief that every child can succeed is to be commended. We are honored to call her a pillar of Valley View.
And finally, from Romeoville High School, Principal Derek Kinder.
Good evening, Vice President Goojus, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, members of the audience, and members of the community. On behalf of the Valley View School District, Romeoville High School and Romeoville High School, it is with great pleasure that we recognize Mrs. Nicole Agizio as a pillar of Valley View. During Nicole's 11 years in education, Romeoville High School has been lucky enough to benefit from her service for the past six years. During her years at RHS, Nicole has worked as the Student Resource Team Leader, or SRT Leader, and most recently, the Special Education Department Chair. First and foremost, Nicole is an outstanding leader and an exceptional advocate for all students. Nicole sets high expectations for all involved in the learning environment and models those same expectations in everything she does. Nicole is a wealth of knowledge across all curriculums and has an outstanding understanding of excellent instructional practice. On top of those admirable professional traits, Nicole is one of the most knowledgeable, dedicated, supportive, reliable, and compassionate leaders at RHS. Nicole's commitment to provide for our students, parents, and staff a Valley View is something to behold. Nicole continuously works to ensure the very best opportunities and experiences are provided to not only the students with special needs, but all students. Nicole is truly an outstanding educator with a tireless work ethic that goes above and beyond to ensure the very best for her students. Nicole is an extremely valued member of our leadership team at Romeoville High School and is fortunate, and we are fortunate, to have such a dynamic leader and a team member to help us maximize positive student outcomes. Ms. Agizio and the Agizos are so good, we decided to go get another Agizio, too, and I would fail to mention that her husband, James Agizio, was also an industrial arts teacher at Romeoville High School, and she is the very proud mother of Nicholas and Joe, and Joe joined us up here. So congratulations, Nicole, thank you for being a pillar of Valley View. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchum, National Merit Scholarship Program recognition?
Yes, we have Mr. Kinder and Mr. White. Mr. White from Bolingbrook High School, the principal.
Mom, come on up. Come on up, mom. She's beside him and everything, so I want to make sure she's up here as well. School board members, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, and community members, it is my pleasure to introduce Sandeep Butterwash. Sandeep Butterwash is definitely a student, one of the finest in this country, not just in Illinois, but in this country. Sandeep is being recognized today as a national merit semifinalist. Not only is he recognized as a national merit semifinalist, but I also want to share with you some of his accomplishments. He is a recipient of the Bruce Fishkin Scholarship. The Bruce Fishkin Scholarship is a four-year, full-ride scholarship to any institution in this country. Sandeep wants to go into medicine and become a surgeon. Sandeep scored a perfect 800 on his SAT and a 790 on the chemistry portion of his SAT. He was a 35 on the ACT. He is the president of Bolingbrook High School's National Honor Society. He is an accomplished violinist as well. Sandeep is ranked number two at Bolingbrook High School in his class of 2013. Again, I present to you Sandeep Butterwash, Bolingbrook High School's National Merit semifinalist. Let's give him a round of applause. Fantastic.
Principal Kinder.
Yes, Principal White was a tough act to follow, that's for sure. But Bolingbrook High School did have one, obviously, student finished very well, but Romeoville High School had two students finish very well as well that received academic recognition for their national merit, from the College Board for their national merit status as well, but congratulations most definitely, VHS and Principal White. The first student that Romeoville High School would like to acknowledge is a student that placed in the top 5% out of the 1.5 million students that take the PSATs annually. And that student, the first student that I'd like to recognize is Miss Bethany Beggs, Romeoville High School student, National Merit Commended student, Bethany Beggs. And the next student that Romeoville High School would like to recognize on behalf of the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship is a student that finished in the top 3% of the 160,000 African-American students that qualified for recognition for the PSAT. National Merit Outstanding Participant finishing in the top 3% in the country is Romeoville High School Senior Ade Bawali Ade Labo.
Liaison reports, any and all. Let the record note that President Quigley has arrived. Seeing none, audience participation, stakeholders as individuals or groups may present their views to the board at this time. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Okay, seeing none. Action reports, Dr. Mitchum.
Vice President Goojus, I ask that the board approve student due process cases as presented, A through F.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Abstain.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Action reports, Assistant Superintendent for Education, Ms. Smith and Mrs. Kim.
No report this evening.
No report as well.
Action reports, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, Mr. Grzafi.
No report yet.
Action reports, Executive Director Hawkes.
I have a couple of reports. Action Report 13.1, we're seeking your approval this evening on the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. This evening, the report has 13 separate items for certified personnel, 24 for classified, one for classified administrative, and one for certified administrative.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Hanson? I'm sorry, Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Second action report, 13.2, Resolution Number 1328, we are recommending your approval of the dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Superintendent's information report.
No report.
Legal services report.
No report this evening, thank you.
Association reports, AFT? Valley View Council? Valley View Office Personnel Council? Old business? New business? Questions from the public? Seeing none. Announcements by the board.
Yeah, I've got announcement. This weekend, Hardhaven Outreach is having a 5K run or one-mile walk, starting, registration is online at H2O.org, or you can go to the promenade in Bolingbrook at 7:00 a.m. and early register. The whole thing starts at 8:00, it'll be over by 9:00. If you can't run three miles in less than an hour, you probably should take the walk that's only a mile. They're looking for volunteers, they're looking for participants, anybody who wants to help out, you can contact the office here and we'll have further information, or you can get online at the Hardhaven Outreach, and they've got to just click right on it and take you right to it. It's $30 to run, it is $15 for the walk, all the profits go to H2O, and it should be a fun time. I'm trying to put together a team of runners or walkers, whoever wants to, I don't really run, I'm more plod. So, but it's a quick race, it's just gonna be at the promenade. The starting point is at the parking lot outside of Bar Louie. I'm assuming that means it's on the west side of the mall, so.
Thank you. One announcement, recently, the Valley View School District lost one of our own, Nancy Facelli, longtime staff member at SCAF, and recently, most recently employed at Jamie McGee passed away. Our condolences to her family and to her colleagues that she worked with. Any announcements, Dr. Mitchum?
No announcements.
Any announcements by the public?
I'm sorry, I do have one announcement. Our first community forum is the first of six, will be held tomorrow evening at Oakview Elementary School in Bolingbrook, and it begins at 6:30 p.m. So we invite all community members to come out to the first forum or one of the following forums and provide us input on the direction of Valley View and learn more about the draft of our strategic plan. We invite you all to come, thank you.
You know, I do have one more thing. Over the week, I had the opportunity to meet a judge named Ray Nash from Will County, and in my discussions with Mr. Nash or Judge Nash, he was talking about the scourge that is heroin that is in the greater suburbs of Chicagoland, to the point where in 2007, there were seven deaths in this greater area of heroin overdose, and the average age of those people was in their late twenties, early thirties. Today, we have, as of today, 30, I think it's 36 heroin overdose deaths in Will County. I was in the judge's courtroom for something other than, to get this information, but he had a bunch of young students that are drivers that were in trouble for traffic violations, what have you, and at the dais, he had a package of information for these younger generation kids, 18, 19, 17. If you're 16, 17, or in high school and you get a traffic ticket, you have to bring your parents to court now, not like back in the old days. Anyway, he had a whole bunch of brochures out there, and when I talked to the judge later, he commended Valley View School District for being out in front of this issue, and fortunately, we do have a seminar coming up in November 14th. A lot of other districts are not quite up to speed on this stuff, and I, about 10 years ago, I had the opportunity to be at an event where there was a lady from DuPage County, she's a judge, and she was doing drug court, and she told me the number one scourge in drugs, and this is 10 years ago, is heroin. It's now everywhere, and fortunately, we haven't had many problems with it in our district, but it's all around us, folks. We can't put our heads in the sand about this. Naperville ran a community forum last summer, they were expecting 100 people to show up, they had 800. This is a serious, serious issue, and we have to confront it. The judge will be anywhere we ask him to do it. The man has taken this on as his personal mantra to fight this thing. It is unbelievable, the numbers and the statistics they put out there. The average age of these kids now is 19, 20, 21, 22, 18. These kids are, the drug, you know, back when we were younger, oh, anybody who shot up heroin, oh, man, they were hardcore drug people back when I was in school, that was crazy. Nobody even, you know, even in college, oh, nobody did that, right? Now, they sprinkle it on cigarettes. They ingest it, they don't have to shoot up, they don't have to get dirty needles, they don't have to, you know, it's everywhere. It's cheap, it's extremely strong, you don't have to do it 100 times to OD from it, you can do it once or twice and OD from it. And the other part, and I read up on this, and I'd heard this before, but I really read up on the papers that he gave and I did some stuff online, it's amazingly addictive, one or two times, and you may be hooked for a long, long time, and getting off of this thing is just, there's no easy way to do it. And I hope that everybody out there takes advantage of these forums that are beginning, going around, not just in our district, but around the county, because this is a serious problem for the youth of America right now, and particularly in the greater western Chicago, the greater suburbs and the city of Chicago. This is a huge problem. These kids jump in a car, they run down to the west side of Chicago, broad daylight, they pull in there, they throw out 100 bucks, they throw in the dope, and they're back in their, you know, they're back in wherever they come from, 20 miles in an hour, they're gone. Parents didn't even know the kids have it, they're like, how did they go in town and get it that fast? They put cameras on these street corners to find out where these kids are coming from, and it's just that fast. It's a very serious issue, and I hope everybody takes advantage of these forums that are out there, and we will be on top of it, and I want to commend Mr. Brown, I don't think he's here this evening, the judge mentioned him specifically, said Leroy Brown and your security people at this district are on top of this issue. So I think they all should be committed, and the principals and everything else are very aware of this, but we just need to keep on top of it, because we do not want our young ladies and men dying of this, prefer stupid drug overdoses, you know, it's just that simple.
Thank you. And to that note, there is a Virginia Gap on October 17th at 7 o'clock by Mr. Brown, 18th?
18th.
18th. Thank you.
And President Quigley, you want to state where it's made and how it affects where it's grown at, and also that it affects our military personnel because it's grown over there, and every time that money is spent on heroin over here, it kills our military personnel over there.
That is true. Major preponderance of it comes from the Middle East, comes from Afghanistan and Pakistan and some other areas. There's also some that comes from somewhere in South America, but that's absolutely true. And it's been coming in this country for, you know, 50-plus, 100-plus years, but that's not the point. Point is now, it's really strong heroin, and they said it's between eight and 20 times stronger than what the street heroin would have been in 1975, so.
So just repeat, on the 18th of October at Bolingbrook Village Hall, our own Mr. Brown and also Deputy Mayor Brown- own Mr. Brown and also Deputy Mayor Brown will be hosting, bridging the gap, and talking about this very issue.
But may I make one announcement?
Sure.
I was reminded by one of our building principals, thank you out there, that this month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so anything you can do to support the eradication of that disease would be greatly appreciated.
Any further announcements by the administration? By the public? Nope, seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, voice vote say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose? We stand adjourned.